This is Tuesday, May 12. It's a meeting of the Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. This is Ronald Vavruska, Chairman of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Tim Wheeler.
Here.
It's Tim. Okay. Tom Sanford.
Present.
Present. Janet Campbell. She's not here. Jay Teach. Okay, we have three members, that's a quorum. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Leanne Lee, Clerk for the Inspectors and Land Use Boards.
I'm here.
Okay. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in an affirmative.
Hang on, I'll have to unmute them.
Janice Carroll. Can you, can you respond, Janice? Can you?
Yeah, hang on, I have to unmute her.
Okay.
Yep, hello.
Okay, Janice Campbell.
There's Jan.
Okay. Okay. Let me continue with my, with my introduction. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:33 PM on Tuesday, May 12, 2020. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and a general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the Town of Berlin website at www.townofberlin.com. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public greetings, gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law, to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, provided reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberation of the meeting. With no person in attendance, when, when no in-person attendance of members of the public is permitted, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless some, such participation is required by law. The standard public comment portion of a meeting will accommodate limited public comment. For this, for this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, identifying how the public may join. The public is encouraged to follow along during the meeting, use the posted agenda unless noted otherwise. Supportive material that are available this evening to members of the board can be made available to the public by request. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait till I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself. To the extent that our technical capability allows, public comment will be permitted during the public comment portion of this meeting as follows. Attendees' phones and other devices will be muted unless they, and until they raise their hand, recognize me to speak. I ask each member of the public who wishes to speak to identify their name, and I will afford each speaker time to ask a question and make a brief comment. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And now brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is a change to the sign at Rockwell Apartments. And I ask Janice Carroll if you can present what you, what you want to do and what, what you're trying to do and why you're doing it.
Hello. Yes.
Hello.
Sorry, my strain just changed.
You.
Hello, hi. I'm with Cheick Consulting, but I'm on behalf of the NRP Group. I have a few things I can share on my screen. I don't know if I'm allowed to or not, or if that would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Um, how do I do that? Okay, can you see my screen?
Yeah, I can. I guess we all can.
Good to hear, good to hear. So I, we have previously been in front of the board. We presented this sign back in, I want to say last September, between April and September last year sometime, and we got it approved, and it's currently built in front of the apartment complex today. I don't know if any of you have driven by it yet or not, but it is pretty short. And if you're coming, someone's laughing at that. If you're coming from 495 or 295, I think it is, and you're coming around the rotary, it's pretty hard to see, you can see it's over here. We zoom in a little bit. So what we were looking to propose today is that we raise it a few feet. So currently, as it stands, it maxes out all of the regulations and requirements. It can't go above what it currently is by right. So we're looking to come here today to get a variance or see, I guess, how you think about this presentation. So as you had seen, it's the exact same materials. This is the same dimension. The only thing that has changed is that this is now three feet. So it is a little bit higher.
What was it before?
Normally, I think the max is four feet. It was only a foot on the bottom. So normally, this dimension right here to the top would be a max of four feet, and so we're proposing it will be six feet.
I'd like to comment, I went by today to see what it looked like, and I had a hard time finding it really.
Exactly.
And I, I see the problem.
Yeah. Yeah, I talked to Richard from the building department. He had the same thought that it was pretty, it seemed pretty short.
Would any member of the board like to make any comment on this presentation?
I'm Tim Wheeler, and I agree. Whenever I've gone by, I've thought, it's, it's a nice sign, but it would be enhanced by being able to rise up out of the ground. So that extra two feet, I think, is highly appropriate.
Tom Sanford from the Planning Board. My question is, is that, once the entire landscaping is done, can you get a mass of buildings behind you? Wouldn't this sign become more evident at that point? Right now, it's competing with that temporary sign that's next to it, and, you know, it's not landscaped properly or whatever. Are we jumping the gun here a little bit?
So, as is, yeah, you're right, that this is kind of taking precedence, but as is, it's currently sitting a little bit below street level, and so it's kind of ducked down a little bit, so there will be nicer landscaping around it. I have, can show you the landscaping I have on my computer somewhere, but, um, but it will still be pretty hidden. Obviously, the buildings are there, but there's no sign showing where to get into the site other than this one. So if we did raise it up, then obviously it would help out a lot. Did that answer your question? I'm sorry, I got off, a little bit off track, but this is the.
No, it explains what you're trying to do, and I understand that. I just, my question, jump in the gun.
I mean, we might be, but at the same time, if anything, the, I feel like might block it a little bit too, if it's too low. Oh, sorry, I'm dropping something.
That's fine. No, that, what you're proposing here, where you have the hand on top of the sign, is that taking into consideration your raised sign, or is that an existing condition?
No, that would be existing.
That's existing now.
I believe so. Doesn't look like it's any higher than it currently is.
So once that landscaping and the, is done, and, you know, the, the feature now is that sign, I'm playing devil's advocate here, why wouldn't that be adequate?
This is Tim again, and my, my sense is that because it really is at below, almost below the grade of the road, if you really want to have some fun with the landscaping, you're going to be pretty limited with that just one foot rise. So add the extra two feet, the, the sign's appearance is going to be basically the same. You're just going to be able to do a lot more with the landscaping at that base.
I apologize. The one that we just showed is. This is Ron, and I think what I'm seeing now, that is with the landscaping, that is with the new dimensions.
Yeah, you're correct.
Because the old dimensions is only, only 11 inches from the ground to the base of the sign, and when you see those flowers there, you can see that's more than 11 inches. So that's, that's, that's what the new sign would look like, Tom.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
So it's not getting any bigger, it's just getting taller.
Yes, yeah, no, exactly the same dimension, it's just a little bit taller, so it's easier to see from the road.
Okay, do we have any other comments or questions on, on the sign? Would someone like to mention, make a motion to approve this sign?
To approve the proposal?
I move that we approve the modification to the sign. That's Tim.
Okay, Tim makes the motion. Any seconds? We're in three people. I'll second it. Any other comments before we take a vote? Hearing no more comments, I will take a vote, a roll call vote. Tim, how do you vote on this motion?
Aye.
Tom, how do you vote on this motion?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so it's unanimous, 3-0. So it's approved.
It's here.
I'll send, I'll send a letter to the building inspector that we've approved the new sign. Do you think we have to take any, any other action on this, Tim? I think that'll do the trick for us.
That should do it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Janice, it was easier, we didn't, we didn't need any variances or anything like that. It's, it's approved.
That's good. Makes life easier.
You're welcome, stay around us. It's an open meeting. I don't know what interest you have in the rest of it, but you can leave or stay, whichever you prefer. If you, you want to get on to other bigger and better things besides what we're discussing.
I'll stick around for a little bit. If I don't talk to you, everyone's gonna be.
Okay. Okay. Then the next, next order of business on the agenda is to appoint a new member to the Economic Development Committee, Committee, which is Jeff, I got his, okay, Jeff Green. We had his application came from the, the Chairman of the, of the Economic Development Committee recommending that he be approved to be a member of the committee. I sent out his application form with his resume on it, and then, does anybody have any comment on, on Jeff Green before, before I ask for a motion to approve him? Okay, I.
I, this is Tim, I think he'd be a good addition.
So you want to make a motion to, to appoint him to the.
I move that we appoint. I move that we appoint Jeff Green to the Economic Development Committee for a term that I, whatever term it is that he's supposed to be filling, there must be, he must be filling somebody's unexpired term that has some date that perhaps Peter knows. Peter's floating around here, isn't he? Yeah, maybe Leanne could unmute Peter for a minute, he could.
Peter is, Peter is here. Do you want me to promote him up to panelists so you can discuss with him?
Yeah, he might know how long the term is.
Okay, I'm moving him up now. Let's see if we can get him unmute. He's got to turn his camera on.
My camera is on, it should be on. I don't have that functionality, let's see.
Okay, we can hear you.
There we go, there we go, hold on. A little more functionality. There we go. Hi there.
Nice, and the question is, what's, what's Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'm trying to look. I, I'm not sure whose term he's replacing, hold on. Who's, what, what the term is, if you wait a second, I'll try to figure it out. I would suspect it's in Mary's draft, but let's see here. No, it's not, it's not immediately obvious to me. I, I have to imagine it's in Mary's draft, and I think you can make the motion to populate, to fill the seat the way Tim's described. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, actually, but.
Okay.
Can, can.
I can't. Can you appoint him into the, into the vacant slot?
Yeah, so my motion is. Make a motion like that to point him for a vacant slot.
Yeah, he's, we're pointing him to fill a vacancy that has some specific term, and, and that'll be determined at a, at a later date.
I'll second the motion.
Second emotion. Any, any more discussion on this? Okay, we'll take a, take a roll call vote on the appointment of Jeffrey Green to fill a vacancy on the Economic Development Committee. Tim Wheeler, how do you vote?
Aye.
Tom Sanford, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That's 3-0, unanimous vote.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to sign off.
Thank you.
Unless you need something further from me and wish you a good evening.
No, you, you, you did all, all we needed. Thanks for, thanks for showing up. I hope.
All right. You guys have a good evening, stay safe. Thanks.
Thanks, Peter.
You too. Okay, I was hoping Jay would be on this, at this meeting, and I have, next on the agenda, I have some plans for the, and we got various things going on, Safe Streets and other plans and historical corridor, and I was hoping that Jay could kind of put it all together and see where we're going, so we're not going in the three different directions. But he's the one who's, who's most knowledgeable. He's the one who has a passion for this whole thing, and so I was hoping he would be here and just kind of explaining where everything's going, unless you want us, want to do anything now, Tim? Well, should we wait to the next?
I'm trying to recall. So this is Tim, and I'm trying to recall whether you were forwarded materials from North Brookfield in regard to their center of the study. Did you guys get that? You did get it?
I got it. Yes.
Yeah.
And so in that package, in that package, there were, there was the North Brookfield presentation, and then there were also a list of best practices, which were short, but at the bottom, there were two links, and those locked into some materials that had a lot more meat to them, and I thought, if you haven't had a chance to read those yet, it might be worthwhile, because it, it talks more specifically about some of the ways in which you might engage the community in trying to develop a, a vision for the Center Village, and some of the tools that you might use to accomplish some of those objectives as well. So because of this virus, we're all sort of at loose ends, and the study that we've been given the money for runs through June next year, so we've still got a year to, to put this into effect. And as a result of Central Mass, who's leading the process, being so involved with the distribution of a lot of the state funds that are coming to boards of health and economic development within the 40 communities that they represent, this has sort of been slid to the back burner for a little bit of time, but it's going to come back, and what it does, in my mind, is it offers an umbrella that helps us link several different programs that we're eligible for, the Safe Roots to School, the Community Choice, which has to do with housing, and the Complete Streaks, and that's the, the objective, is to use those tools to move the agenda forward, once it's decided what sort of vision we want for the center. And the part that we'll accomplish with this study is, is interaction with the public, which of course is complex right now, because you can't pull people together and have the types of dialogues you want. So hopefully, as we go through the summer, maybe there'll be an opportunity in the fall to begin to either use Zoom as a tool to bring people together if we can't join physically, or perhaps things will be improved enough so we can actually have some public meetings where we can get particularly the stakeholders in the center. It's not a big group initially. You know, you, if you can get National Lumber to the table, and the church, and Jane Sawyer, and a few other folks like that, along with Public Safety and Highway and those guys, I think we can begin to have a good conversation about what some of the possibilities are. But that's sort of the statement right now, we're sort of. What?
I was going to say, how about, would, could we run, could we run some ads on the public access, promoting it?
Yeah, I think once, once we're in a position where we really want to begin to get input, you know, we'd start to use a lot of those social media tools and the platforms that the town has, and I think, I, people are, I think people are interested in participating, and we just have to find the right vehicle, but it's, I don't think we're going to see a lot done with it real quick, just because we benefit so much by being able to get the dialogue going with people. The other thing that's happening is that the, I always forget the name, MVP Municipal Viability Program, is that it? We've, we've been given another grant to, and we talked about this at the board meeting a while back. Central Mass is spearheading three this month dialogues, one in North Brookfield, I think, one for Berlin, and, and there's another town, maybe Grafton, in which they're bringing folks together to talk about preparedness for climate change and things like that. We talked about that a little bit at a board meeting a while ago, and that's supposed to be a forum that's going to get pulled together first part of June, I guess. And I think that'll give us an idea of how successful we could be at trying to bring people together electronically for something like this Center Village study. So that's all I have right now, Ron.
We don't want, probably, but from what you're saying, Tim, we don't want to go and start out something with electronic meetings, and we're not going to get a lot of people, and then we start, we'd start it all over again, where we can meet the public in, in general at a big meeting. We should wait till.
Yeah, where we have a year.
Shakes out a little bit. Yeah, it's not like we, we're pressed to get it done by, by the fall.
There, there may very well be some benefit in getting the few major stakeholders in the center exposed to the fact that we're having these discussions, and that we want to include them in the, in the dialogue, and if, if they have issues that they'd like to raise and items that they'd like us to address, it'd be good to begin to get those into the, into the mix sooner rather than later, probably. But I think.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, how do we go about doing that?
Well, you know, Jay and I talked when we met with Evy and, and Carrie and Margaret was there too, the, the five of us chatted back in February or whatever. February or whatever. And we we sort of drew up a list of some key people that needed to participate. And I think it may be appropriate for Carrie to begin to develop some materials that we could use to get out to those folks that expressed our interest in having them participate. So they can begin to focus some of their ideas on some of the issues that we want to tackle.
And do we have to be careful here about who we let know that that we left? Did we leave somebody out by by just going to certain people? Are we any kind of?
Well, we've we've been running We've identified all the landowner. We've identified all the landowners in the center. And Central Mass is is working up maps that show those parcels and the acreages and the ownership and all that sort of stuff. So I think if if we can get that finalized and we could look at that list and you know, notify those people, but focus particularly on the larger landowners, perhaps to start with.
Okay, Central Mass is putting together such a list. Okay. So at this time, we just want to let them know something is happening. Just some basic information on what's happening and that there'll be more to follow, so to speak.
That's my sense. And I think Carrie and and Jay and and Margaret and I'll probably get together remotely at some point pretty soon and and we can report back to you what what's going on a little more clearly.
Okay. Sounds good to me. We still have Carolyn on. Carolyn, would you like to make any say anything? Or why don't you say something to show what you there?
Hang on, I'm I'm moving her up to panelist.
Yeah, I'm going to put you on.
There she go. I don't see her now. Up there she is.
I see him muted.
There we go.
I just unmuted her. There we go.
There we go. And where's my camera? Oh, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, get your camera so we know it's you. There it is you.
Um. So I did get a chance to look at. So I missed the last meeting because I spaced that you guys would actually be meeting via Zoom. So I watched it on YouTube and I got in touch with Jay and asked him to send me the documents that you guys were just talking about. So I have looked those over. So it's a very interesting project. Interested in being part of it.
Okay, how's the campaign going?
Well, I think I'm doing okay. Can't tell exactly
I I let Eloise know she had a sample ballot out and said that you were a candidate for reelection.
Yes, I saw that.
And she says, oops.
Yeah.
I think I guess she's correcting that.
There you go. So I will definitely be keeping up on Zoom. And got to admit, the commute's not bad.
My my wife said to me tonight, isn't it nice? You don't have to travel. I said, we'd been better off. It was raining tonight. I'd get more benefit out of it.
I know. It's true.
I don't have to go out in the rain, but it's such a nice night. It wouldn't have been bad.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that's all we have. The next meeting is May 26.
So Ron.
Anybody has any agenda items given to me? Yeah?
Ron?
Any other business?
So town meeting is going to be what the 26th of June or something like that?
I think it's what's
It's so the election's the 29th. So seven days before that, right? 22nd?
The 22nd.
So it's like the 22nd.
Yeah. Why?
Well, I'm trying to I know we May, where am I here? June 22nd, yeah. So if it's the 22nd. I know that we've agreed not to have certain articles on that agenda. But I can't remember if we if we took everything off because we had one article that was going to relate to marijuana. And that's a zoning article. So why don't I check with Margaret and make sure that that we don't have to have a public hearing? Just in case, because I can't remember what's on and what's going to wait till the fall. But I'll ask her. Because if we did need to post it, we'd have time after our if we meet in two weeks. I think the next one is my calendar again. If it's the 22nd, it'd have to be in the newspaper, the 12th. Well, if we're going to have a hearing on the 9th of June. The public hearing would have to be in the in the paper on the 22nd and the 9th. The notice. Which means I have to give it to the paper a week from today. So what I'll just check with her and make sure that there's nothing that we're supposed to be including. And if there isn't, we're fine. If there is, I'll post a notice for a hearing on the 9th. That makes sense?
Yep.
Jay's trying to break into the meeting. Leanne, can you let oh?
Yeah, he's he's on. He can't. He doesn't have his camera, but he's unmuted.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? No.
Is that you barking?
Yeah, we can hear you. We just can't see you.
Oh, you can. Okay. Well, I tried to start my camera and it says it won't start it, but normally it works fine. So switch to another camera. Well, that's kind of difficult. Another video camera. Can I borrow one of your guys' cameras for
Well, run it over.
So Ron, if that makes sense, I'll I'll talk to Margaret and just make sure that we don't have anything we're supposed to post.
Okay. That makes sense to me. And then we'll get it done by we'll have the public hearing on on June 9th.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Jay, you you missed some some big things. We approved the sign for the
Yep.
For Rockwell Apartments at River Bridge and we we approved Jeff Green as a member of the Economic Development Committee. Do you know Jeff Green?
Yes, from the bank. Yep.
Okay. So we should have had you here. You could give some inside information when did we make a good choice? I guess we did. Anybody?
Yeah, I think
Other business that come before?
You want a motion to adjourn?
Well, I want to add before any other business to come before the board before we entertain a motion to adjourn.
We had a we had on the agenda, the Village Center project.
Yeah, we just discussed
Wasn't that on the agenda?
We finished that.
Oh.
That was.
All right. Okay.
And we finished the discussion. And we decided, well, why don't you brief him? Well, he Tim's going to get get together with you on on this thing. We we have we have a year to get something
Because I I think I sent stuff around and I was waiting for on the report that I sent around whether you the guys felt that was what we wanted for our project.
As long as they spell all the stuff correctly on the maps.
They didn't.
No, look at it.
Jay, I
There's a half a dozen things that are spelled.
Oh, that's right. And remember that. You're right. Yeah, I was I was looking for more. I mean, I thought it was. I thought that was very nicely done, but I didn't feel like there was going to be a really meaningful result, tangible result from it. Long list of great ideas.
Jay, I suggested that
We can
That folks Jay, I suggested that folks look at that best practices sheet and then go into those two links that are at the bottom of that page because they get into a little more meat. Which may be a little more applicable to some of the issues that we want to address. Terms of zoning in the long run.
Yeah.
And I said
I was thinking we need I was thinking as an outcome, if we could get to something more tangible. I mean, our situation is actually, I think, a lot different than North Brookfield. I thought if we had some kind of at least strum and model from what we might want, it would give something it would be something that that our team and and other people who are, you know, important, could kind of have as a vision that they could carry around with them and right?
In in the case of North Brookfield, they hadn't passed the CPA and they hadn't become a green community. There are a whole series of things that we've done that they haven't dealt with. So in their battle plan, accomplishing those things were was, you know, parts of the process. The thing I noticed from the paperwork that Carrie sent us was they reached out to a number of state agencies and and local agencies that can assist in some of the evaluation of where you want to go and put you in touch with some of the funding that might make it possible to take some of those first steps. So I think that that's one of the important things anyway, but we're we're many steps ahead of North Brookfield. So I think what we're asking for is a more refined focused study with different types of recommendations at the in the final stage because we've we've done so much more than they had already. Our town hall is already restored. There's is in the process of being identified as a big major project, you know, it's there's just so many things that we've done that in that particular paper that Central Mass did for them, they've made a lot of recommendations for North Brookfield about stuff that we've already accomplished. So I I think it's a good example of what they what North Brookfield needed, but it isn't what we need necessarily.
Yep. Ron Stark and I see
You ready for a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm ready for a motion. Make a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Always and waste and excuse me, we can't do it that way.
That's right.
Yeah, Tim. How do you vote? Okay, Tom, how do you vote? Okay, Jay, how do you vote? I vote yes. We we use I. This is New England. We say aye. And I vote aye. So that's unanimous. Okay.